I think we'll remove item number thirteen, eradication of safety board decisions to be run listed as last. We have two recommendations on two separate hearings. The first one is a resolution approving safety board findings and recommendations. Whereas the Brookfield Town Council hearing this council is in need of approval, the attached safety board findings and recommendations with respect to Brookfield Police Officer Ryan Geiser. Now therefore be resolved by the Brookfield Town Council statement in the end as follows: The attached findings of the safety board of Brookfield Indiana regarding the police officer Ryan Geiser are hereby approved and ratified in all respects. The accompanying disciplinary measures regarding police officer Ryan Geiser are approved and termination pursuant thereto is ordered to be taken effect immediately. Doled resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Brookfield this day, 2022. Any discussion?
Yeah. Of course, I have something to say about this. I did not settle this safety board. I had refused myself, but that's fine.
Can you tell me?
That doesn't mean I have to agree. Doesn't mean I have to agree with this. And I'm announcing now that I do not agree with these findings. I won't say why at the moment. It'll all come out in future.
Okay. Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Kathy made a motion to approve the resolution as presented as there is a second.
I'll second.
Broke seconds, all in favor? Opposed? For the record, it's four to four in favor, all opposed. Next up is a resolution approving safety board findings and recommendations. Whereas the Brookfield Town Council hearing this council is in need of approval, the safety board findings and recommendations with respect to Town Marshal Terry Minchin. Now therefore be resolved by the Brookfield Town Council statement in the end as follows: The attached findings of the safety board of Brookfield Indiana regarding Town Marshal Terry Minchin are hereby approved and ratified in all respects. The accompanying disciplinary measures with respect to the Town Marshal Terry Minchin are approved and termination pursuant thereto is ordered to be taken effect immediately. Doled resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Brookfield this day of 2022. Any discussion on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution.
Kathy made a motion to accept the resolution as presented as there is a second.
I'll second.
Broke seconds, all in favor? Opposed? So the motion carries three to one, and I will abstain. With regards to the safety board decision, we previously, the board had previously passed an ordinance allowing us to offer immunity to any officer who testified that may have adverse impact to their testimony. I believe that Donald Forsy had made a testimony, and I would recommend to the board to officially grant Officer Donald Forsy immunity for the content of his testimony.
I'm sorry, what did you say about Donald Forsy?
We had previously passed an ordinance allowing the board to offer immunity after an officer had testified. And so Donald Forsy had testified, part of his testimony included testimony that could result adverse reaction to him. So my recommendation is that the board officially grants Donald Forsy immunity as we outlined in our previous ordinance.
And if I remember, if I remember right, when that ordinance was made and read, the immunity pertaining to a particular case and also made clear that the officer should be telling the truth.
Correct. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Brooke made a motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Kathy seconds, all in favor? Opposed? Four to one. Next up, we have a golf course personal property grant. You want to kick this off?
Can we skip that? Can we skip down for a second? I thought somebody was going to be here, but I don't see you here yet.
Okay. We'll go to the health grant. We have a, we previously passed a resolution that we had made a motion to participate in the health grant alongside with the Frank County Commissioners. This is a joint resolution that would allow us to transfer, transfer funds as we had promised as part of our cooperation. So I'll go ahead and read that resolution. Whereas the Brookfield Town Council hereby this council on behalf of Brookfield and the Frank County Commissioners need to assist in the help of, need to assist in the funding of the health grant community coordinator position. Now therefore be resolved by the Town Council Commissioners on behalf of their respective entities as follows: Brookfield agrees to transfer 10,000 of its art funds to the Frank County Indiana to be matched by Frank County for the purpose of funding the health grant coordinator position. Frank County and Brookfield agree to cooperate to select such community coordinator. Frank County agrees to return Brookfield's funds or any unused portion thereof if the community coordinator is not mutually selected and employed, or if such funds are not fully used for the community coordinator position for any other reason. This resolution shall be effective if approved by both parties for two. Any discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the joint resolution.
Kathy made a motion to approve the resolution, is there a second?
I'm second.
Sure, seconds, all in favor? Opposed? Five to zero. The employee handbook, Jean's sheet back there? Just skip this for a second there. Okay. Shilling Center, the Brookfield Volunteer Fire Department has spoken to me regarding the use of the Shilling Center. In the past, the Town Water Office has managed the Shilling Center. What I would like to propose, and this has the full support of the Brookfield Volunteer Fire Department, is that the Brookfield Volunteer Fire Department is better suited to manage that, that building since they occupy half of it. They frequently use that for many of their events. They have fire, volunteer firemen who are there on a daily basis so they can monitor the condition of the building. They can better look to make sure that it is cleaned and is cleaned afterward before they can deposit back. So my recommendation to the board would be to turn over rental control to the Brookfield Volunteer Fire Department for them to manage, have them set the rates, have them check people in, check people out to make sure that the building is receiving the care that it needs. In addition, this will allow the town to let the volunteer fire department use the funds to better maintain that building. It has been painted for the first time in 27 years. Last year, the fire department's getting painted this last week for the first time in 27 years. So I think it's a better use of the town's water department employees and stay in the water department and will allow the Shilling Center to be better occupied when there's room for that. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
I think it's a good idea because they're there and we are not, so they have better grasp of what the building needs if there's an issue.
Kathy made a motion to authorize the Brookfield Volunteer Fire Department to manage the rentals of the Shilling Center, is there a second?
I'll second.
Broke seconds, all in favor? Opposed?
We can go right up if you want. What I was obviously going to do here was not, sorry, not coming in person.
Okay. Do you want to keep it off then? This is the topic of the Brookfield Golf Course Personal Property.
Yes. So this goes back to the original purchase agreement for the golf course in the fall of 21 and the initial closing of the property. At the time, there was not entirely clarity on what personal property was, it was not included. Part of it, everybody agrees was entirely included. And there have been ongoing discussions about what was and wasn't included and coming up with evaluation for that and attempting to determine a way to deal with that. This has been going back and forth with council for quite a while. I think you guys have gotten some email updates about it and things like that from me. The, so what you have before you is a proposal that would finalize everything as respect to basically any personal property up there. There's a bill of sale that lists numerous golf carts, other equipment. It addresses, also in the agreement, it addresses some flooring de-decking. It addresses a couple of other things as far as pieces and things, and basically it would be a full and final resolution of everything up there. The real property was never an issue over, it was just finalizing what, what the status of the personal property was. The, so what this basically comes down to is it kind of falls under two provisions where this is a bit of a hybrid between a purchase and a settlement agreement. So I tried to draft this and it covers both bases. There is a bill of sale attached as part of the settlement agreement, and I reference a code site that if there's a unique purchasing opportunity for the, the community to realize significant savings, that you can go forward with that purchasing opportunity. So that's referenced in there, and it's also captioned in terms of a settlement, that's a final, final settlement agreement and release of claims. The, the price that is in there is $120,000. That's what I believe that they finally negotiated to, willing to accept. They believe the property is worth more. Based on research we've done, there probably is a good chance the property is worth more. We can show that the property is worth more, and this is a savings for the community versus having to go out and find all of this equipment, replace it, price it, everything, plus the fact that you've got supply chain problems. Jess has been looking into all year if this fell apart, the, what would happen as far as bringing the replacement equipment, and it's very hard to come up. She did finally find some, so that is good because that gives us some comps and shows that, you know, based on the comps, that this does come out to be a big deal in addition to the other research that we've done as far as pricing all of that out. So the, the LLC, I mean, I think there's been some tension on both sides. They are taking less than what they do believe is fair value to get this resolved and get behind them and everybody to move on. In an ideal world, maybe this was dealt with before, probably in an ideal world, this would have been finalized before closing, but I think there was pricing information and different things hanging at that point, apparently that was before my involvement, so I'm not entirely sure. All I know is that's the situation we have down operational golf course. You didn't either resolve this, or, and the golf court, and the LLC did allow you to use the equipment all summer with this hanging in the background, and so that's an additional benefit that you got out of this. But basically, your options at this point would be to accept this as a settlement agreement, or say you're done and go to the open market and try and replace the equipment and see what the LLC wants to do with that. They do believe that they were entitled at that point to valuation for use of the equipment, so there is potential there that you may still have an ongoing dispute that may have to be sorted out, and the cost and expense of going ahead and sorting that out. So even if you walked away and attempted to replace all this equipment, which again looks like a valuation of that, you probably would be doing that for more money than what's here. So that's the high level. If you look at the bill of sale, it lists all the, the equipment that's included in, in the agreement. Jess has documentation as far as what replacement equipment would have cost, as far as other, she went out and researched to find comparable equipment. It's a little bit challenging, since it is used equipment to find good comps for it, but she's gone out and found that, so we did our own math and came up with a number that still makes $120,000 a good deal for the town. It's lower than what the LLC thought they put it was worth, but again, they're willing to compromise to get it done. So that's what I have, unless you have questions for me, that's what's presented there for you. So if this is approved today, the LLC would like to keep their books closed out, so they are, they would execute it and check if the issue and things would be resolved and be done. They're not going to check until they execute the agreement, obviously, but once they, once that's executed, then everything will be resolved as effect of this. There is a mutual non-disparagement in there because there were rumors floating around the community, various points, I've heard them, I'm sure other people heard them. What that basically is, the LLC is agreeing not to disparage the town, and the current board members voting for this are agreeing not to disparage the LLC. I can't bind the future members, I mean, they're elected officials, I'm not going to bind them, but as far as you, if you, that was one thing they requested, that there's basically a walkaway, so we're ready to put it behind them. But, you know, if a future board member can say what they want to say, they won't be bound by the way that non-disparagement's distracting. And that the benefit of the non-disparagement flows to the town, not to you individually as board members, because I think, in my opinion, that would be negotiating individual benefit for you, which is not what we're doing here, we're negotiating the benefit for the town, so that it is done. So that's what I have.
Any questions for Grant?
Oh, I should add one other thing. So the form of the payment that people see in there, there was an account that was misdirected, it was the golf course product payment processing system. And the transition part of it was not getting directed to the town and still getting directed to the LLC. At this point, everybody agrees it's paid, it's the town's, and that's why you'll see the structure on there. It's $120,000 less of credit for that amount that got dumped into the LLC's account. The reason for doing that credit structure is, again, just to get it wrapped up so that we're not waiting for paying back and forth and all of that, but that's why that's ended off. It's not directly tied to the agreement, it's just part of the form of payment that they will be retaining. Part of that is paid to them in error apparently by that company initially.
Any questions for Grant? Is there a motion regarding the settlement and property agreement by between Brookfield Golf Club Preservation LLC and the Town of Brookfield, Indiana?
I'll make that motion.
Chuck made a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Broke seconds, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
So we'll have to get, put the LLC, their signature on the agreement, and then get that paid.
Do I sign the bill of sale too, as well, Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
I believe so. At least as an acknowledgement, if you see that you received me.
Is it us that signs it?
They, I mean, no, they would execute the bill of sale, I can't remember if the money was on there or not. They executed, did their transfer membership of all that property.
Okay.
So there may not be, sometimes there's an acknowledgement line, but I can't remember if there was on that, but yeah, they don't need one.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How much money was it you loaned to the LLC this year?
$24,000. Who's that paper?
Yeah, it was in the transition. It's $24,000.
$24,543.1 cents.
And that was, that was a third-party processor that paid that over as part of the transition, and it never actually came in, the town offered.
Can you explain why, one of the things that was said when the golf course was bought was that all the property that was on it was part of the purchase price, and now it seems like you're paying over the, because the, the purchase price was supposed to be a million, and now it looks like you actually are paying exactly what the LLC asked for, 1.1 million. So it seems like maybe something was not completely divulged to the public at the time of the purchase, hence all the rumors. If you could just try to dispel them right now for the public so that they understand instead of saying nothing.
So I think in the, in the initial contract drafting, again, I was not around, but there was, it's just not clear exactly what ended up being included on the property based on the property schedules that were attached.
I have a copy of it right here, if you want to see it. It says the personal property of the golf course is included in attachment B.
Right, and there's an attachment B, and there's items in there that are not included and that were crossed off.
No, there are a few, but golf course, for, for instance, the golf carts are the first two items that are on that list. So I guess I just don't.
Yeah, those are not, I think those are not, they're, those are not all of the golf carts. I think there's no dispute that 25 came over.
Yes.
Some have burned up in the fire, some have been replaced, they have bought any more golf carts, and that ended up in a lot of confusion.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. 25 came over?
Twenty, there's no dispute that 25 did end up, did end up being included in that initial purchase.
No, it's 38, it's 19 and 19.
That's the original purchase agreement. Those carts burned in the.
I can't hear you.
Those carts burned in the fire. Those carts that are on that list, not all of them, but some of them were in the clubhouse fire. So 25 of them came with the course. They purchased and replaced the remaining 20 roughly, and then they purchased another 30 to 40 carts after the fact. So the, the list that you have is prior to the fire.
There's a, there was a, there's a dispute on the wording of the contract regarding the original property, and I think that's where this, this comes from, and this is the attempt to settle that now. So you're looking at the original purchase property list from 2019 when they bought it from Sparky.
No, I was, I'm looking at appendix B to the offer to purchase that was signed in 2021, which is after the fire.
That's the.
That's what you guys signed.
That's the original purchase, that's original list with the 2019. So there's a, there's a dispute between what the, the purchase agreement said in reference to that list. And because of the.
And was that known at the time of the signature, this legal document that was signed?
I don't believe the dispute had arisen at that point.
So they didn't tell you that the 38 were included at the time that you bought it? You thought 38 golf carts are included? And then you didn't find out until after you signed the agreement, then they said 38 are not included?
We didn't find out till the first, after the first of the year this year of the additional list they provided that we're purchasing today.
Who provided this, appendix B, to the town?
I don't know. It wouldn't have been.
The, the original appendix B was drafted by the entity prior to the LLC and got passed around at various times. I'm not sure if the LLC provided it or who provided it, I wasn't there at the time it provided.
Like I said, it's an attempt to fix it, it's an attempt to move forward.
Well, I understand it's an attempt to fix it, but I'm trying to make a point is that it seems like somebody wasn't very forthcoming when you signed an agreement, and that's a concern of the town people, that this is all happening after the fact.
Yes.
It's a, it's a big concern, and I just want to make sure that we know that the town didn't know about this until after the fact, and now the LLC told us this year that those carts are included.
The town, this board is now bound by an anti-dispiration agreement. We weigh the, we weigh all available options to us, we believe that this is the cheapest option for the town to move forward. If there were, if there were a different option, we could have, or, if there had been a better option and a cheaper option for the town, the board would have implemented that process, but this is, this is what we have.
So are the advertisements that are on current golf carts going to be removed immediately?
I would hope so.
Okay. Can you tell us, Gina, where this money is coming from? Thank you.
Anything else on the golf course, Grant?
No.
Jess?
No.
Jess?
Oh, hold on. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the process of looking for carts all year, I finally did find a place in Batesville. He, Marcus is his name, he came down and looked over some carts for me for trade-in, possible trade-in of the 25 carts. So he looked at 25 of ours to trade in for 25 of his, which are newer nicer. He came up with, I think we agreed to trade in a conversation, maybe 20 instead of the 25, that being that he would give us roughly 3,500 apiece, 3,400 for some of them. So the total price for our trade-in, he would offer us 44,000 for trading 20 of them in, and then for purchasing 20, we would pay 40,400. So basically, we're trading 20 of ours out for 20 of his.
They're better condition.
Yeah, and Brett went over there and looked over them and drove them in.
And these were part of the 25 that were actually included?
Yes, yes, yes.
What's your recommendation to the council?
To trade them in? I've been looking all year. I mean, we have some carts that are better than others, but some of them are just really bad, and those are the ones that we could possibly get rid of. So I recommend trading them.
What's the total expense minus after the trade-in?
40, 40,000.
So I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm still fuzzy. So you're trading 20 for how much? 30?
40.
The total was maybe, sorry. We would have created 44,000.
Was that 20 or 25?
That was trading on 25. So then there's five of 500 apiece that we're keeping to fix. So 44 minus 2,500.
So the credit would be 41,500?
Yes.
Okay. And then the new carts are how much apiece?
3,500.
Okay. So that'd be 70,000 for the 20?
Yes.
Okay, so it'd be 70,000 minus 40. What did I just say, the number?
41,500.
41,500, thank you. Okay. So the difference on that, I think, is 28,500.
Benefit of doing it now versus waiting until spring?
Oh, I would not recommend waiting. The only reason I found them now is because it's winter time. So come February or March, they'll most likely be gone, as, again, I've literally been looking all year. He just happened to get them in bulk, he, I think he received 40 to 45 of them in one shipment. Found it on Facebook and then called it pretty much immediately, and I've been talking with him for a month now.
Discussion? Is there a recommendation? Is there a recommendation?
I would make the motion to have Jess go ahead and trade them in, I know, and I was looking this summer too to try to find some, I couldn't find any for under five, six thousand dollars, and you could find just one or two at a time. So I would make the recommendation to go ahead and do the trade-in while we can get them.
Brett's motion is to approve the, the trade and purchases presented, is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds, all in favor?
I abstain.
Okay. Sharon, were you in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, opposed? And then Chuck keeps standing.
I abstain, yes.
Okay, so, uh, four in favor, one abstention. Anything else regarding the golf course? Okay. Uh, ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-six, this was on our office meeting, but we had to quickly rush through that meeting, so we, we pushed a few things forward. Uh, this was an ordinance we've been considering for quite some time regarding the amending chapter fifty of the code ordinances of the town of Brookfield, Indiana. Uh, this would increase the fee schedule for the, the tap-ins from five hundred dollars to thousand. Um, after we had made that, that consideration, uh, Tim and Andy had looked at this and, and had uh, recommended that they may increase this proportionately based on meter size, um, which is how it's currently done. Uh, so that number went from a thousand, from five hundred to a thousand to, for a three-quarter one inch line. Uh, it goes up to fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, and two thousand dollars for our two, four, six, eight-inch line respectively. This would be the tap-in fee plus material and installation cost as it has traditionally been. Any discussion? This would be the first presentation of the ordinance, we would have another presentation. Did we lose current?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, this is the first, first presentation, uh, this will be, uh, available for review. At the town water office, we'll have a second presentation should the first reading pass. Available for final approval at an upcoming regular town meeting. Any questions? Motion to approve?
I want the motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-six.
Kathy made a motion to approve first reading of twenty-two dash twenty-six, is there a second?
I'll second.
Sharon seconds, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. I'm gonna skip that one, just to verify that we have two, I believe it is, it's two. When it's rates, you have to have two public readings, right? No. On, on the ordinance amending the rates, we have to have two public readings on that, or is it a single?
I think it's two.
That's what I thought too, so this would be the first reading, we approved the.
Yeah.
The first reading, it'll be available for second reading after the first of the year. Okay. Uh, second is ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-eight, this is an ordinance establishing. I'm sorry, I skipped one. Uh, it's twenty-two dash twenty-seven, this is an ordinance amending chapter fifty-one of the code ordinances of the town of Brookfield, Indiana. Uh, this alters the, the sewer tap-in fees from five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars plus material and installation costs as previously defined. Once again, this is the first reading and approval, it'll be available for a second reading after the first of the year at our first regular scheduled meeting. Is there a motion regarding ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-seven?
Make the motion to approve ordinance twenty-two, twenty-two dash twenty-seven.
Kathy made a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Brett seconds, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Now we have ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-eight. This is an ordinance establishing opioid settlement restricted unrestricted funds. Gina, do you want to, do you want to review this? This was part of the state settlement that's paid out to.
This is part of the state settlement of the drug companies, yes, so we're going to be receiving distributions anyway. Um, we have already received the first distribution, so I'd like to establish those funds on the ledger. Um, there is still some guidance that's going to be relationship safe where accounts, so obviously, we wouldn't, uh, this is just for purposes of receiving at this time, and then more information once we have what we can spend that stuff on.
So it establishes fund twenty-two fifty-six, which is an opioid settlement unrestricted, and fund twenty-two fund twenty-two fifty-seven, which is the restricted settlement. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-eight.
Kathy made a motion to approve the ordinance, is there a second?
I'll second.
Brett seconds, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, establish twenty-two-three meeting dates. Uh, so historically, the town of Brookfield, the county council of Brookfield has met twice a month. Uh, I've talked to, uh, the three members that are coming, or staying on the board. Um, I've not talked to the two incoming members. Our recommendation would be to drop down like the county council does to one meeting a month. Um, and conduct all that business, Gina has checked into how to, uh, do prepaid payment of claims and payroll, um, and has a resolution to that effect should the three outgoing board members agree to drop down to one meeting a month. Any discussion? On the one meeting, not the resolution, yeah.
I agree that it is somewhat of a hassle for us to come on here every two weeks. There's no doubt about that. I mean, even though we're making a humongous amount of money. I, I just worry about the problems arising from approving crimes. And I'm sure that's what this is supposed to take care of. But would it cover everything that could come on?
I don't know if it would cover everything, think of it, Gina reached out to the listserv of other municipalities, Gina, do you want to weigh in?
There are multiple towns that have one meeting a month. Um, a lot of them had the resolution after that for the pre-proved payment of claims to, in the statute, so it's. When I look at that list, I think it covers most of what we pay.
The county meets once a month.
They do, right, the county council meets once a month.
I have a problem with it.
They could be helpful to schedule, I mean, for scheduling, we're using their, their building twice a month. We can conduct the business, you know, every one meeting a month and do the same thing, and then just have Gina do the claims.
Man, come.
Sure.
Yeah, I just was wondering if you guys would not do that and just wait for the new board to come on. Um, the, the reason the county council meets once a month is because the only thing that it handles is financial information. The, the commissioners also are the executive and the legislative part of the county, and they need every two weeks because there's a lot of county business that happens that needs attention every two weeks. Um, this council does finance, executive, and legislative, all three items are, are, the powers are within the five people here. Um, so meeting once a month in comparison to the county council is, is a bad comparison, it's not, it's not the same. I had something else.
What, how often does the council?
They meet every, three times a month?
They meet every two weeks.
Every two weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
They also manage.
Pretty much, yeah, it's pretty much twice a month anymore, they used to have three, but yeah. Um, the one, yeah, to watch, uh, payroll claims in the back end occasionally on a month's break, it's a little bit, and that's, or I think Gina put this to cover that.
In addition, the meetings that this town board has had have never been fifteen or twenty minutes. Every meeting you guys have had has been at least an hour, sometimes more. And if the meetings become fifteen or twenty minutes several in a row, it might be a good idea to consider cutting back, but, uh, with the rate that this town board has gone, there's no reason why um, this decision should be made by, uh, without allowing Earl and I a voice.
If you guys have a voice, Earl?
To vote.
If it votes three, then?
It doesn't matter, it's the principle, we're elected officials and we need to vote.
I know that. I still think we're not using our own space, we're using the county's space, it makes sense from a scheduling perspective. Also, we can cover business one meeting a month. And if there are needs for additional meetings, we've called those, just like we did today. There's nothing in the state statute that would restrict two board members, two council members from calling a session in place, if there's additional business that needs you, and Earl could call that. Do you want to?
I just ask you to vote now.
Chuck, I have to vote now also.
What did you say, Earl?
I asked me to vote now, give this. Because when you want to have first reading, second reading, you're standing up two or three months instead of spending one month to get that roll.
You could have a special meeting to have second reading.
We don't need to have special meetings, we have regular business meetings. Special meetings work for special meetings.
We've got to call that recently for having too many such meetings.
Thoughts, motion?
I'm gonna expat, I'm speeding.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. Motion, or motion?
I'm up in your thoughts.
I'm, I'm up in the air. I'm just up in the air about it.
We can't hear you, we can't let us speak up.
He said he's up in the air.
I'm up in the air about it, I'm, I'm sorry.
How about?
I'm just up in the air about it because I, I see you two are coming on. We three could vote yes, and it would not. You two coming on. But I would still, once you're in the two, I think, I think we all do, I'm sure. So I don't want to take it out of your hands today.
Just table.
I have to be in case.
Do you want to make a motion to table?
Yes, I would like to make a motion.
Chuck made a motion to table, is there a second?
I'll second.
Brett seconds, all in favor?
I'll stay.
Both of them will stay on the table. Uh, page twenty-two dash twenty-nine.
Um, I would still ask the grant, that, um, payment of claims is statutory, right? So essentially, they could still.
Which, what the?
The pre-proved payment of claims? Or do nothing?
Yeah, yeah, you can, you can adopt that as far as, the county has an ordinance on that, that they have certain things that could be pre-paid and then they can ratify afterwards, but.
But is it necessary since it's still statute or just?
Um. You probably adopt it at some point still, but.
But it's not.
It'd be a good idea to adopt it. Unless you need it for the day, day to table it until the next meeting, I guess.
Okay.
Gina?
You go, just table it, I guess.
Okay.
Does it need to make a motion or a dissent?
We'll be tabled, so. You can just, it, it doesn't matter, you can just present it at the next meeting, fine.
Okay.
Uh, twenty-two twenty-nine, this is an amended salary ordinance, Gina?
So, um, at one time you guys had recommended to do five percent, so I have. Sorry, at one time you always recommended to do the five percent increased rate for, um, salaries, so I have the full-time employee schedule put in the back of the shirt, as well as the fire board. Um, I'm assuming part-time seasonal help will be based on when they sign their, uh, offer lunch for twenty-twenty-three. Because the part-time and seasonal people are rate, are paid range, not exact. And then there was a discrepancy, um, with that comp time, it's double time for our actual hours worked over forty on a Sunday or a holiday, so um, Patrick from New Focus HR, uh, prepared this, recommended we have that in there for clarification. And then, I believe, I'm not sure when it was, we had talked about the weekend, um, utility workers that do the plate coverage on the weekends. Um, so I added that there, emergency weekend rotation and how that would be handled. And then the holidays, I did adjust it to match the county schedule.
There was a point made at the previous hearing regarding the titles of the police officers. It still references chief, assistant chief, lieutenant sergeant, and then it mentions deputy town marshals. Should they be listed as town marshal, deputy town marshals?
Yeah. That's, I mean, that's the way the, you can have different grades of deputies based on assignment of duties, I don't know if you want to go forward with this now and do, do that as you're sorting out that. Um, but eventually, it probably should be back to, to the town marshal and there's deputies, but then the deputies have different assigned duties and that would base their, their pay rate off of that.
So if I'm not mistaken, I, I checked that, throw that out. So when it comes to the town marshal, it doesn't say anything about him being appointed from prior red. And, and our ordinance book, that we are currently using.
The ordinance book has a, a procedure for appointing the town marshal, although that's not what the town has followed in the past, like in the past, the town's always done it on a yearly basis.
And, and then also what I found interesting is it said he can hire one deputy marshal, and that that would be an appointed position.
I don't recall that.
The marshal itself would not be an appointed position.
Yeah, I don't recall it's on my head if the, if the deputy's appointed or not, at the look.
So how many ways it may sound, if he can only hire one person?
They can, I mean, they can clearly hire more than one person in the department total, and there's, there's town marshal law or the state that have varying numbers of employees.
Correct.
Um, everything from one part-time on up to ten. Um, but no, I think probably somebody needs to go through and spell out more of like a job description type rule to break that out as far as how they're paid. Uh, because statutorily, there really are not grad, gradation between the town marshal and deputies, and so really gradation would come through would be on job description and what they're doing.
I think I would just, um, recommend for admitting this hour ordinance to instruct Gina, um, wherever it says police chief, to put town marshal, since we've not formally abolished that town marshal system. Um, or put something in, in this that says that police police, the town marshal, you know, may be referred to as police chief, but designation is still town marshal, same for the other officers.
Yeah, I guess you could do that, that they're, that that level of deputy is known as something. That level of deputy town marshal is known as something.
So for the time being, I mean, the state's board, um, recommended, recommended the council consider restructuring the police department. Uh, they did not give a definition of what that means, I don't think we're going to discuss that, uh, today. Um, but we can minimally approve the changes that have been presented, or it's been presented today with the understanding that the board may instruct you to amend the handbook to properly reflect the title, so there's not. so that there's not a discrepancy in the future. Is that fair, Grant?
Yeah.
So just leave it as is for now?
I think it should until we figure the new board, what the restructuring looks like, if any. Is there a motion to approve the salary ordinance that's presented?
I want a motion to approve the salary.
Chuck made a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Brett seconds, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, resolution twenty-two dash eleven, this is a resolution to income for funds.
There's only two line items that I went to a number in twenty, from twenty-two to twenty-three. Um, the fire department had brought some invoices, um, this past week. So I would like to cover their revenue balance over to twenty-two-three, which is two thousand dollars, um, a little over two thousand dollars, two thousand eight dollars and sixty cents. Um, and then I'd also like to, uh, uncover twenty-five thousand from the Ed Fund, um, for partial payment to Brekney Inc. Um, for the thing about the sewer project when that gets paid.
Any questions for Gina? Motion to approve?
I'm making a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash eleven.
Brett made a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Twenty-two, resolution twenty-two dash twelve, this is a transfer appropriation, Gina?
So for any of you have, um, at the end of the year, we're able to transfer any, um, positive appropriations into the negative appropriations. Obviously, we can't account for every single appropriation order spent on that specific one item. So we do this at the end of every year. So I have, um, transfer appropriations from general, uh, N B H, and we're about public safety, banking, cap development. The totals are on the front page. Um, and then the negative appropriations are attached for each public appropriation I'm handling. And it's just the amount that is in the negative.
Any questions for Gina? Motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash twelve? Chuck made a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Brett seconds, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, employee handbook update, Gina, Grant?
Well, I, um, I had requested New Focus HR to update our handbook. It still represents the old position of the town administrator. Um, I also had them update the holidays as well.
Any questions for Gina?
What, I'm sorry, what was the second thing you said?
The holiday update.
Okay.
To reflect the same as the county schedule, I'll say.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the twenty-two twenty-five ordinance for the handbook update.
Brett made a motion to approve, is there a second? Chuck seconds, all in favor? Opposed? Five second, motion carried. Anything else, Grant, or Gina?
No.
No.
Chuck?
No.
Nothing?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Shirley? Jess? Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank Kathy for her many years of service to the town council. Today would be her last meeting. I know she's picked up quite a few extra meetings that she didn't necessarily sign up for. And Shirley, I wanted to thank you for your service this year. It's been a pleasure to get to know you. So thank, thank both of you, best of luck. Um, welcome Bridgette and, um, Earl to our next meeting. It'll be on Thursday, January fifth, here at seven o'clock. Um, wish everybody a happy new year and we'll consider a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn meeting.
Brett made a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.